Welcome and good evening, and we'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order. And first will be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner, and then Commissioner Reed will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you again for the opportunity to serve our constituents in Rutherford County. Lord, I ask that you go before us tonight in our discussions that we honor you with our words and deeds as we do our best to make the decisions that affect each one of us in this county. I ask that you be with, Lord, our soldiers overseas that are serving to protect us, Lord. I ask that you be with their families and bring each one of those soldiers home safely. And we ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercey.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Commissioner Kush.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serrino.
Here.
We have a quorum, nineteen present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion concerning the approval of these minutes? Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed those, found them in order, and moved that they be approved with one exception. The budget report, item J-2G, had the incorrect commissioner's name making the motion to approve, and I recommend that, or I move that we amend that to have the correct commissioner, which is Will Jordan.
Do we have a second to that? Commissioner Kaplan? Okay, any other corrections or additions? Thank you for that correction notice there, Mr. Phillips. If there are no other corrections or additions, then all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you, that's carried. Next, we have a resolution of recognition, and Commissioner Dodd is going to make a presentation regarding Taylor Cuneo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and if the Cuneo family and Coach, anyone else that wants to join, please come up. Just join me here. Thank you. I have the honor of acknowledging Taylor Cuneo with this resolution. Whereas Central Magnet School student Taylor Cuneo won the T double S, double A, A double A Individual Cross Country Championship on November 1st, 2014, with a time of eighteen minutes and fifty-seven seconds. And whereas we express our sincere congratulation to Taylor's parents, Stephen and Lori Cuneo, here, without, for without their encouragement, this would not have been possible. And also, congratulations go to Coach Alan Nichols, Principal Dr. John Ash, and Athletic Director Mark Kirksey. Whereas we commend Taylor for her dedication and commitment, which made this championship possible, and for bringing this fine publicity to our community, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to Central Magnet student Taylor Cuneo for her achievement, resolve this 12th day of March, 2015. And I will not ask you to speak. So, thank you.
Commissioner Dodd, put that in form of a motion so we can pass that resolution, and you so move.
And I so move that we accept this as read.
Several, Commissioner Phillips and others. Okay, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. All right, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Taylor, for your commitment and dedication and hard work, must be a good word that goes with all of that, that it takes to be that kind of runner. We are proud of you. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have, no public comments have been requested for tonight, so we're not going to be having those this particular meeting. Next, we have a resolution to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Turner, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, if you remember that we have the consent agenda, this is the first month that we've actually put this into action. If you do have anything before the meeting, you reserve the right to go back to the mayor's office to ask that any individual item be polled. There's nothing that's been asked for so far, so, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And is there a second from Mr. McAdoo? Excuse me. All right, any further discussion? If you have no one wishing to remove any item, then we're ready to vote. All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, then, please, excuse me, Mr. Schaefer.
Can we go over that rule on the consent agenda again? Commissioner Turner mentioned to go to the mayor's office before the meeting to get something off the consent agenda and on the other, but what you said after that was that it could be done here.
It can be done here, yes, definitely.
Sorry, I should have provided clarification on that. You do reserve the right to do it on the floor, but if you see something before that, it can be removed from the agenda and then added separately. I apologize, that's my fault.
Well, sometimes you see it before, but you run late.
Right, that's right.
Nineteen, yes.
All right, that motion carried, but yes, clarification, you can remove any agenda item that's been listed under the consent agenda at any meeting, right here on the floor. And we hope that you'll use that privilege if you so need it. All right, so, we can move right on into the rest of the agenda, then. We have no unfinished business, and we will start with the reports by our standing committees. And there is not a report from the purchasing committee, so we will be ready to have the report from the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Commissioner Jordan?
I do appreciate nobody taking anything off the consent agenda. First is item K-2A, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general purpose school fund be amended as follows: increased expenditures, seventy-three thousand, seventy-nine dollars, seventy-three hundred, seventy-nine dollars, and decreased expenditures, seventy-three hundred, seventy-nine dollars. That's for, I believe.
Changing interest and penalties about principal.
Okay, all right. That's just, okay. Next is for Spectrum, increase expenditure in service staff development, sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, and decrease unassigned fund balance, sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars. And next is coordinated school health, increase revenue from contributions and gifts, forty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. That goes to expenditures, health equipment, thirty-two thousand, nine hundred, and other charges, eighty-seven hundred, twenty-six dollars. And that is resolved this 12th day of March, 2015. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Right. Second, Commissioner Piercey and others, anyone have any questions on that at all? If you don't, then we will ask you to please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Nineteen, yes. Motion passes.
Next item, K-2B, Resolution Authorizing Issuance of Interfund Capital Outlay Notes. A resolution authorizing the issuance of interfund capital outlay notes in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed five million dollars of Rutherford County, Tennessee, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said notes, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy and taxes for the payment of principal and interest on the notes. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Right, we need a second on that motion. Mr. Turner, did anyone have any questions concerning this resolution? If not, then please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Nineteen, yes. Motion passes.
Item K-2C, Initial Resolution, Resolution Authorizing Issuance of General Obligation Bonds. This has to be advertised, and then there's a twenty-day waiting period before we can actually move forward with this for public response back. This number could change after that, but it could only go down. We can't go up with that, but this has to be out there for twenty days. Initial Resolution Authorizing Issuance of Not to Exceed Thirty-five Million Dollars of General Obligation Bonds for Rutherford County, Tennessee. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second from Commissioner P. Any further questions or discussion? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Nineteen, yes. Motion passes.
Okay, we will continue with the agenda. There is not a report from our Health and Education Committee, or our Property Management Committee, or our Public Safety Committee, and in addition to that, there's no report from our Public Works and Planning Committee. So, we're there, ready to then call on Mr. Trey Gooch regarding our Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Steering has three resolutions for your consideration this evening. The first resolution is to petition the state to allow Rutherford County to participate in the pilot program for voting centers. Mr. Chair, whereas Senate Bill 840 and House Bill 1352 amends Tennessee Code Annotated Title II in Chapter III to create a pilot project to determine whether convenient voting centers should successfully be established for local and state elections to make it convenient for voters to vote at centralized voting areas on Election Day in the county in which the voter is registered, regardless of the voter's precinct. And whereas the County Election Commission has indicated its willingness to participate in such a pilot project by adopting a resolution by a supermajority vote, and where it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County that Rutherford County participates in such a pilot project, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to respectfully request the Rutherford County State Delegation, amend Senate Bill 840 and House Bill 1352, to name Rutherford County as one of the pilot counties to have convenient voting centers in place of our current precinct format. Be it further resolved that the county clerk is hereby directed to forward a copy of this request to each member of the Rutherford County State Delegation, resolve this the 12th day of March, 2015. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Johnson has a second. Now, is there questions or discussion? All right, if there's no one has a question, all of you in favor of this, then please say aye. Are any opposed? Let the record reflect that was unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second resolution is in support of House Joint Resolution 78, which opposes state unfunded mandates. Whereas, Mr. Chair, House Joint Resolution 78 opposes unfunded state mandates in Tennessee. And whereas the number of unfunded state mandates on counties and cities has significantly increased during the past several years. And whereas such mandates stem from state laws and regulations that require counties and cities to provide services and programs and perform certain responsibilities without providing state funding for such services. Whereas the Rutherford County Commission supports state legislation that would relieve counties and cities of all obligations to carry out any mandates arising from state law, regulation, or policy unless state funds are provided. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that it supports House Joint Resolution 78. And be it further resolved that the county clerk send a copy of this resolution to the Rutherford County State Delegation evidencing the action taken by the Board of Commissioners for Rutherford County, Tennessee, resolve this the 12th day of March, 2015. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Call on Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This came to our Steering Committee under Other Business, and some of us were not aware of it at the time that it was coming. And I did some more study after the meeting, and between then and now, I had come up with an alternative resolution that we can send to our legislators. It's a little bit more general, that covers more ground, and it's a better fit for our county's needs. Specifically, it asked them to pass something that's binding to affect the unfunded mandates. The House Resolution 78 is not binding. It just kind of expresses the sense of a legislature that they want to try to do something about unfunded mandates, but we need to ask them to follow through and actually do something about those. Additionally, my amendment would ask that they include on every piece of legislation that affects local governments, that they include a cost analysis of what it will cost us if they pass that bill. Some of those have such things now, but they are in terms of minimal impact, you know, great impact, it might be some impact, but it doesn't give us a specific dollar amount. So I think it would be very beneficial for all counties and cities if they were required to include on that fiscal note, a small note that includes what it's going to actually cost the counties and cities to implement that bill. And then finally, someone has a bill to require a referendum on borrowing money to build capital projects, and I'm not sure if that is something like a basketball stadium, or if that includes a school, or a judicial facility, or what, but the bill says that if you borrow more than ten percent of your operating budget, then you have to have a referendum to borrow the money. And understanding of that bill is that it only includes big projects, like a convention center, but once the door's open for that, they might come back around and say, we're going to have to have a referendum to borrow, you know, a smaller amount of money for a school or judicial building, and that could really put us in a bind. And in fact, that is an unfunded mandate, because somebody has to pay for the election to hold that referendum. And I'm not sure where we would get the money for that. So, I was going to offer my handout that I gave to you as an alternative version of this resolution, and, Mr. Chairman, I move that we delete the resolution as Mr. Gooch read it, and we replace it with this.
Okay, do we have a second to that? Who was that? Excuse me, Mr. Kaplan. Thank you. Now, is there further discussion? Commissioner Schaefer?
Questionable. Since one of them is already, the first one is already up at the General Assembly, why can we not pass the resolution for both? Because the first answers what they're doing up there right now, the second says it's what we really want. For, and a follow-up on Commissioner Stevens, Stewart's Creek High School would have gone before a referendum in this county to be built with the cost it had with, at the time, with what our budget is. And that puts you between a rock and a hard place, because the state says that you can only have, you have to have certain class sizes depending on whether it's elementary, middle school, or high school. So, right there, if, on that one, and if the referendum was turned down, then the state can go and take monies from us, from our education funding, because we're not meeting the mandate, or we're left with portables, which, I'll leave it at that, but that's what, I'm throwing this out, that I don't see why we can't pass both of them.
Okay, we have to, we do have a motion that has an amendment that replaces the first motion that Mr. Gooch prepared, so we have to act on that first. So, Mr. Jordan?
Have we got somebody that's agreed to carry this first bill? I mean, the guy in the hopper? I know they have a cutoff date, is their time. I haven't heard this year when the date is.
This will simply be, Mr. Stevens' amendment is simply a resolution that we'll send to our delegation.
So, it's not something we're asking them to pass?
There will not be a bill put in place.
So, there's not any kind of, I was hoping we were going to get some action here, get an actual bill, but it would be, I would hate to change that once it's already been accepted by somebody.
Just expressing our sentiments about unfunded mandates.
And I think, Commissioner Schaefer, that what Commissioner Stevens was referring to, that Joint Resolution 78 may possibly require referendums. So, in your, the situation that you cited, that's not something that I don't think that we would support. So I think his amendment is in lieu of the Joint Resolution 78. Am I correct on that?
The last that Commissioner Stevens mentioned was by a freshman representative from, as I read it, from Memphis, and a representative from Franklin, that are coming up with this idea. And just to show that there's no favoritism, one's a Democrat and one's a Republican. But I don't think what, the last part that he has, has anything to do with Joint Resolution 78. That particular bill has nothing to do with the resolution, or the amendment to the resolution. Any other questions? We're going to have to vote first on the amendment, which is a replacement in a broader language that would override what the original resolution that was proposed. If there's no other discussion, then, I don't know, let's just, please cast your votes on that amendment.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes.
Eighteen, yes. One, no. Amendment passes.
All right, so, hold on, I'm getting a little bit of advice here. Yeah, we had a motion to, so, we have to vote on the motion. Okay, all right, so, I do have to call for you to vote on the resolution itself now, so, we're going to do this before us vote, since it, all of you in favor of the motion that was originally made. Mr. P., excuse me.
I wasn't going to say anything, but, but since we backing up and doing this, I do want to commend Representative Sparks for bringing this forward to us, and I appreciate him coming to our joint meeting. And also, that's actually one of the things that I had asked that they do, is, you know, address the unfunded mandates, and I think that was a good first step, and I, my sincere thanks to him for bringing that forward. And I'm kind of like the other commissioner down here on the end, Mr. Schaefer is, I have no problem with passing either one of these, but since his is non-binding, I'm fine with going ahead and substituting this, but I don't want there to be any thought that it was a slap at what he offered. I appreciate sincerely what he put out there.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion regarding this matter? If not, we're ready to vote on the original resolution, so all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, so we're going to make note that that was unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Gooch, you may continue.
And our final resolution is in opposition of House Bill 1262 and Senate Bill 1174 regarding the Correctional Work Center. Whereas, Mr. Chair, House Bill 1262 and Senate Bill 1174 is unique to Rutherford County in that it proposes to take away the county's authority to run the Correctional Work Center and transfer it to the Sheriff's Department. And whereas this bill was sent straight to the General Assembly and bypassed all stakeholder, local stakeholders, including the Correctional Work Center Board, the Steering Committee, County Mayor, and County Commission. And whereas this is a local issue that should remain local at the Correctional Work Center, is a well-run facility, and is one of a few work centers in the state of Tennessee that has been accredited by the American Corrections Association. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to strively oppose House Bill 1262 and Senate Bill 1174. Be it resolved, further resolved, that the county clerk is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to each member of the local state delegation for Rutherford County. Resolve this the 12th day of March, 2015. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Phillips and others, any further discussion or questions? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I just wanted to clarify for the public what we're voting on here. I think there's been a lot of misinformation, and people are confused about what we're doing. We are not voting tonight on whether to merge the work center and the correctional facility that we know is a jail, what we are doing. Well, first, let's go back and look at the law and how we proceed with this. The system that we have with the mayor and the board of directors over our workhouse prisoners requires the mayor to recommend the change. If we want to merge those two, the mayor has to recommend the change, and two-thirds of the county commission has been agreed to that change. So, unless the mayor recommends a change, we're stuck with the system that we have. And the sheriff, and Representative Womack, and Senator Ketron introduced a bill that said in Rutherford County, those two entities will be merged. So it would have been a forced merger on us without our input. And so the thing that we had at Steering was to oppose the forced merger from the state. That's very dangerous when representatives and senators will start telling counties and cities, you will do this, you will merge that, the way that we want you to do it. It really sets a dangerous precedent. So that's what Steering was opposing. I'm not sure that anybody on Steering was voting yes or no on whether or not we should actually merge the two facilities together. I'm open to listening to the discussion about whether we should do that or not. I'd like to see the pros and the cons, and the cost-saving possibilities with that. But we're not voting on that tonight. We're simply voting on the procedure, on how we got to the point where we are, and the path forward. So, voting yes on this resolution is just simply saying that you don't want the state government telling us what to do. And it's really that simple.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes, it was my understanding from, that this bill was being withdrawn. If that be the case, I see no reason to really and truly vote on this. As Commissioner Stevens said, this doesn't, this is not addressing the merits or lack of merit of merging the two facilities. That's a separate discussion, but if really and truly that bill has been withdrawn, I see this as a simple, an exercise in vain.
Okay. Commissioner Schaefer?
I think this has a lot of merit to send this up to the state, because it lets them know for next year what we've already told them, that we disagree with them getting into local affairs, when they have enough problems in this state. The BEP-2 funding that was passed in 2007 that they have never completed, given us the full money from it, for example, and to go along with the other unfunded mandates, other things that they have, the textbooks with the standard proficiency indicators that come out of the State Board of Education, that our General Assembly could spend some time looking at that, I think, instead of just letting it come right down to us from a, I would say, a non-transparent board. So that's why, things like that, and things in the past that have come, been stuck down our throats that are local things, that we use as unfunded mandates. And for that reason, I feel that this resolution must go forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, then, please cast your votes. Sir? Why is that? No, it's just a regular, straight resolution.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, please record the votes.
Eighteen, yes. One abstained. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Gooch. Okay, now, this worked out just almost perfectly. We do have one public hearing tonight, and we have a zoning request, number 15-A-004. And the Jeffrey Turner, located at 3147 Franklin Road on Old Fort Parkway, and the existing zoning is residential medium density, and the proposed zoning is office professional on a site of approximately .32 acres. Mr. Demose, please.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the Commission. The subject property is located on the southern side of Old Fort Parkway or Franklin Road. The property had a single-family dwelling on it in the past, but the house was removed as part of the widening project for Franklin Road. The current size of the property is slightly over 12,000 square feet, which makes it a non-conforming lot, as the minimum lot size in the RM zone is 15,000 square feet. The applicant proposes to purchase the property and combine it with adjacent property through a re-subdivision plat immediately to the west at 3167 Franklin Road. The applicant's intent is to use this property for additional parking area for his existing business at 3167. There is a concept plan in your agenda materials. It's not, doesn't show exactly where the access and everything will be. We expect access to the west, where the existing business is, as well as access on to [inaudible]. Uh, there is a concept plan in your agenda materials. It's not, doesn't show exactly where the access and everything will be. We expect access to the west where the existing business is, as well as access onto Franklin Heights Drive. Uh, we would not encourage access onto Old Fort Parkway Franklin Road, so we think that that would be a, a good plan that they are proposing. Uh, if the rezoning application is approved, they will be required to submit an engineered site plan to our office. Something else that'll have to show will be the landscaping. Uh, there will be a type-one buffer required to the properties to the south, not so much to the west, as that property is already zoned for office use. Uh, there's also performance standards that have to be met as far as noise, vibration, odors, those kind of things, for all commercial and industrial-type uses. But again, this would just be simply a parking lot. Uh, due to the various constraints on the property, staff did not expect, and we still don't expect, this property will ever be used for a single-family dwelling. Uh, we also feel that extending the existing office professional zoning in this area is compatible with the residential areas to the south. Staff did recommend approval of this. There was very little discussion at the Planning Commission on this item, and they also recommended unanimously an approval. Uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Demossi regarding this application? All right, Mr. Demossi, thank you, and we'll now declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this, uh, request, it's your opportunity to come forward and make your comments, and come forward and give us your name and address, anyone that wishes to speak. Please do that now. Okay, I don't see anyone rising to come forward, therefore the public hearing is closed. And do we have a motion concerning this, uh, request?
Motion to approve the conditions, Mr. Chair.
All right, and a second from Commissioner Phillips. Now, anyone that have any questions? All right, there being none, you're ready to vote. All of you in favor of this, please say aye. Are there any opposed? That is unanimous. Mr. Demossi, do you have anything else for us? All right, thank you. Now, we are at a point where, is there any other business anyone wishes to bring before this body? Wow, Mr. Commissioner Schaefer.
I was waiting, I thought maybe this was Mr. P.'s week also. But there is a ham breakfast this weekend and, uh, on Gamble Lane in Laverne from six to ten. Great ham, eggs, everything, conversation, so I hope to see you there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will, I've been asked to remind you again, excuse me, I'll, um, after we're adjourned here, that, uh, we are still available for filming and getting a couple of comments from our commissioners in the balcony. Now, Mr. Gurley?
Yes, in keeping with Commissioner Schaefer, if you've had enough ham, 4-H is having a pancake breakfast and, uh, kind of a craft fair, I believe, Saturday at the Egg Center.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner P.
Since he mentioned the ham breakfast at Ketchikan, it's on the weekend of the twenty-first, Saturday the twenty-first, so...
Okay, well, thank you. Now, Commissioner Reed, oh, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, mine doesn't deal with eating or, or pancakes, or ham, or whatever, but I just want to mention to the Commission right here, I had the opportunity at the end of last month to attend the exit audit of our Correctional Work Center. I know that's been brought up this evening. But, uh, I was very proud of this center by, uh, hearing the report from the American Correctional Accrediting Board that was there investigating our center, that had spent three days there in that center, looking for something wrong. Uh, they even told us they went behind the dryers trying to find lint, and they didn't even find lint. But out of a possible score of two hundred, we scored a hundred and ninety-nine point six. And I don't know where that point four was, but, uh, they didn't, they didn't tell us that. But I just want to say congratulations to that staff out there for an outstanding job. They need to be commended for what they've done out there, and what they're doing to change some lives and some individuals out there, as well as what they're doing. So I just wanted to mention that for, for that group out there and what they're doing.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Commissioner Jordan?
Well, I'm not talking about food either, but tomorrow night at Planes, Trains, and Automobiles is the Bald in the Borough event that Commissioner Sandlin has historically participated in. It's a great fundraiser for cancer, and, uh, if we go by precedence, the District Nine Commissioner is supposed to go get his head shaved tomorrow night, between four and eight. So, Commissioner Gurley, we'll expect to see you there, and, uh...
Well, thank you. All right, I don't know whether he's going to do that or not. Okay, well, I appreciate your participation and your support. Is there any other business? If not, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much.